Good evening. This evening, I would like to make a response to Mr. Reed's interview that was aired on the BBS a couple of weeks ago. I made some key points while I was listening to him. And then we had a council meeting. And we put together a series of questions. And some of those included, how does this year's flow compare to last year's flow in the last three years? How do they compare month to month? Is there a pattern? If June the first was recorded as 170 gallons per minute, what was it for the same time last year? After we fixed the leak at the arena two years ago, did we have problems with operating the plant that winter? What has been the maintenance costs of the plant for the last five years? What are the operation costs on a monthly basis for hydro, caustic soda, chlorination? What is the difference between the cost of operating the plant all year round and shutting it down for part of the year? What are the health risks, if any? What are the risks to council? What has to happen in the startup? For example, do you have to do backwash, cleaning the tank, and so on and so forth? And we asked the staff to provide us with some information based on that before we made a response to Mr. Reed. Now, I haven't quoted Mr. Reed directly. What I've done is taken what I thought were his key messages. And so I'll go through those. And I'll give the key message first, and then council's response. So the first, I guess, key message was his first question. Does the council want to put in meters? The answer to that is no. The last thing that council wanted, or wants, is meters. Meters were discussed in our plan as a last resort. What we wanted in the plan was cooperation from the residents. We were saying, work with us so that we know how much water is being used and provide opportunity for everyone to run their water during the winter months if they had to. In other words, we want to be able to manage our water for everyone. The second key point. He asked, should our leaks be fixed first? The question that we quandary with was, how can we find the leaks if we can't distinguish between what is being run to stop lines from freezing and what is running because there is a leak? And with the varying age of piping, there will always be leaks that will require repairs. Leaks are part of regular operations and maintenance. Mr. Reed said the project has been approved for four meters? The answer is yes. Mr. Reed said it himself at his delegation presentation at our last council meeting. We don't know anything about meters. We want to learn about them to see how they work, what the benefits are and what the negatives are, or if they are for us at all. But we have to learn that. Now, whether that goes forward will depend on council's response to the delegation. And that will come within a week or so. A monitor has been approved. And if not the monitor, then the use of a meter. The idea of the monitor was a resolve for several issues raised by both some residents and council members. Because we've been having council meetings where we have been discussing that issue only. But on several occasions on the BBS, I also asked for feedback from residents. And some of the concerns that came forward were things like seniors living alone with no help, people who can't afford to upgrade their lines. So the idea of the question was, well, how do we get them to run their water conservatively so that they don't have to spend the money to upgrade their lines? So the intent was for the town to have staff who could help answer questions and get a handle on how much water is being run. In other words, get people comfortable with conservation. Now, I also said at one point to the public, we can't insist that that person come into someone's home. He or she has to be invited. And if community members are cooperating, there is no need for a person to go into your home. Once residents feel comfortable with what they're running, a phone call should be able to identify how much water is being run. I spoke to a resident just a little while ago who's using a saddle valve. And so when they said they were using a saddle valve, I said, well, you're probably running about a liter or two a minute. And that's reasonable. We don't necessarily have to go to that person's home to get that information. Comment from Mr. Reed. We have a lot of low-income people, and $500 for a meter is a lot. Yes, I agree. Council agrees. We have a lot of low-income people, and many of those have already invested money into a personal water filtration system or are getting drinking water either from Beaver Pond or from the store. So either way, they're paying for good drinking water, and then they're paying for it a second time, either in gas or by buying bottles of water. The main point to keep in mind is that we had no intention of putting meters in for everyone. The idea was to have someone on staff to work with the town to be able to keep track of flow rates for usage and leaks at a minimal cost to the town and free for all intensive purposes for taxpayers. Meters were offered up as a solution for those. And again, we were assuming that those would be very few. Most people cooperates. But for those who didn't want to work with the town, then there was the notion of a meter. And in all truthfulness in our discussions for the councilors who were present, we were anticipating very few not cooperating or at least making suggestions as to how we could move forward. Mr. Reed also pointed out that previous councils brought up the use of meters, but never followed through. But now it's a foregone conclusion for the pilot project. For the pilot project, so that we can learn about meters? Yes, that was a foregone conclusion. The notion of being able to find out, for example, if we could meter sections of town. We have to know how those meters work. And before you go into any type of plan or present anything to anyone, the first thing you do is learn about them. And I agree that meters were brought up previously with no follow-through. Council did nothing. I was on council at one point when that happened. Right from the get-go of putting in a water system for Bergio, councilors knew and argued that they would need what I would call an over-capacity system. In other words, if we were going to live and use water the same way that we always did, then we needed an extra-large system to accommodate the use of the water. Because we knew even then that it was excessive. The government of the day would only provide what was necessary. Now, they did come a little bit higher than that. But basically, the plant is smaller than what council would have liked. But I've also been led to believe that when the work was begun on the second water treatment plant, it was suggested that maybe the town should go with Poodoo's. Now, a Poodoo is what is a system that Ramia has. They have one where the water is treated and people can take their jugs or their bottles and go to the tap and run it off right there in town. So they have access to good drinking water in town. And then they use their other water, you know, for regular household use. So the intent for Bergio would have been probably to have more than one because of our, you know, spread of the community as well as the numbers. But that would have provided people with access to good drinking water in town and being able to use long pond water on a bypass system for regular household use. Now, the cost of that would have been much less than the $8 million price tag on the water treatment plant. The council of the day had an opportunity to resolve the issue. But according to reports, it never went to council and it never went out for public consultation. Hence, we have an $8 million water treatment plant that is a good plant. But it and the town's water consumption had to be managed. According to the staff, it's costing the taxpayers $180,000 per year to supply water to the town. And more than half of that is conceivably being run into the ocean. According to Mr. Reed, public has had no consultation. Council believed that there was no need to go to the public. We had on several occasions through council report asked for suggestions. No public came forward. The pilot was for four homes, and we would not go to the public to ask for permission for four volunteer homes. That is up to each private individual. And we asked for volunteers on the news line before the plan was finalized. Council felt that it was obviously important to get consent from the homeowners involved, but not necessarily for public involvement at that time. If we were considering installing meters on all homes, we would have used information from the pilot to go to the public. And then there would have been public consultation. Mr. Reed also made the point that if meters were to come in, people would be governed and frightened to death to use their water, that it would force people to stop showering and flushing their toilets. Yes, meters govern use, like hydro meters. And there are stories of people having to govern those. It is a learning process. But again, I want to reiterate, the intent was never to install meters on homes. Many councilors agreed or suggested that it was a waste of money to install meters only to find out some homes are not running any water at all. Some are using it or running it conservatively. It was an attempt to get people to run less water and identify how much is being run per household so that we can better manage the system. Mr. Reed also indicated that running water for four months, and I interpreted that to mean putting it on bypass, is not a big deal. With all due respect, council believes it is a big deal. We have an $8 million plant that costs the town over $180,000 a year to operate. The average for the last three years has been $181,140. The intent of the plant was to get away from chlorinated pond water. Chlorination and pond water creates a process that builds THMs. Now, I won't bother to say the scientific full names for those. But basically, THMs are a cancer-causing agent. And it's not caused from the chlorine, it's not caused from the water, but it's caused by a combination of the both. Before we had the plant, our THMs were seven times higher than the acceptable level of 100. The building of the plant resolved that issue. Now, we have the documentation that comes from staff and town office that tells us all of our flow rates. And we can chart them and also tells us the level of our THMs. The THMs dropped once the plant was put in. The THMs dropped way below the acceptable level. We dropped from a high of 795 to a low of 23.1. Each time we go back on bypass, we increase the possibility of creating THMs. Putting on meters is not the answer. That only makes us pay. It doesn't stop the running, was one of Mr. Reed's points. Council compared it to hydro use. Hydro bills remind people to turn off lights and use efficient light bulbs. Again, and from advice from engineers and water specialists, the intent of the meter and/or in our case, a monitor, was to address the overuse of water by some residents as well as measure the flow of water per household to help us determine leaks. In our discussions, we were expecting a very small number of those residents. Matter of fact, I think we were expecting probably none. Our focus again was for management reasons. If we know at least a guesstimate close to what each household is using, and then we're over that, then we've got to go find out why it is that we're over. Mr. Reed said we have thousands of water and no complaints about water. So I'll address both of those. First of all, yes, council agrees. We have thousands of water. We're very fortunate. We never have to worry about long pond or up to this point, we haven't had to worry about long pond running dry. The challenge is keeping it up to standards required by government agencies. Hence, we take the water and put it through a treatment process that is supposed to create safety measures. And that process costs money. And secondly, we do have complaints on a regular basis about the water, about the color, about the biofilm, about the amount of pressure, and the fact that we have a plant sometimes and cannot use it. As a matter of fact, water is always a main item on our council meeting agenda. But it should not be. Water and the water treatment plant should be in operationally regular function without too many issues other than, like I say, the regular operations and maintenance. Mr. Reed said taking the approach that you monitor every liter is wrong. In this day of conservation consciousness, monitoring the water being used, in council's opinion, is not wrong. Hydro is one example of how we have become conscious of what we use. We've changed our light bulbs, we've changed our wiring, and so on and so forth. But maybe over the years, we have just taken water for granted. And that's changing, not only in Bergio, but it's already changed nationally, and it's certainly changing provincially. Ms. Reed gave an indication that there's nothing wrong with the safety of our water. Council says, yes, there is, especially when we go on bypass. If there wasn't a chance of a safety issue, we wouldn't have had a boil order in effect for several years and placed on the BBS. Many people, if you remember, used to joke about the message being on so long that it was burned into their TV screens. The bottom line is increased use of chlorination in pond water creates cancer-causing agents, THMs. And that's not a scare tactic. That's a fact. Mr. Reed said, now we want white water. White water is a bonus. White water does look nice. But health is the most important consideration. His suggestion was that the plant should be shut down in December until March, put on treatment the first of April. Council's response to that or council's opinion is, no, it shouldn't be shut down unless there is an extreme circumstance. There are only 1,300 people in this community. And we have, I think it's 496,000, but anyway, I'll round it up to 500,000 just to make it easier with the figures. We have a 500,000-gallon tank. That equates to 385 gallons of water per person per day. Now, that equals about eight and a half barrels of water a day. Now, we use the barrel system into Peter Strayer's, a barrel of water. And I have to ask myself, do I use a barrel of water a day when I'm into the cabin? And the answer is no. Eight and a half barrels of water per person per day is a lot of water. But using those numbers, our tank should last for about three days. The Canadian average is 74 gallons per day. On a normal day, according to the Canadian average, we should only be using about 96,000, a little over, 96,200 gallons. But if that's the case, we should have lots left over. We should have at least 400,000 gallons of water left over a day. That's if we were using Canadian average. Now, we know we use more than that. But 400,000 gallons should be enough to accommodate leaks and accommodate the running of water during cold periods. So why would we, or should we, put the water on bypass and increase our chances of health risks when we have numbers that indicate bypass is unnecessary if the town cooperates? And when I say that, I have to remind you that we certainly don't think it's the whole town. Because the whole town could run two liters a day every household. And we still have plenty of water left in that tank for leaks. Mr. Reed said that to say that we are liable is a scare tactic. He said, for years, we were on boil order, and there was no liability. It didn't exist. It doesn't exist. Liability is not a scare tactic. Based on conversations with municipal fairs and other specialists, it's the truth. Previous councils were concerned about liability. And that, as noted earlier, was why the boil order was on TV. No one can refute the fact that liability always exists, especially after something happens. And when I go out and talk to, you know, other municipalities and municipalities new from land and municipal affairs, they keep reminding me of Wackerton as the example. Staff have been able to find leaks without a monitor. Yes, council agrees that staff is good at their work, but they can't always find leaks. How well you hear the water has many factors. The type of pipe that you're listening to, how much water is running around you, if you have four or five curb stops together, and so forth, makes it challenging. But considering the other duties they have to do, they don't have the time to be working with residents to find out how much water is being run in each household. Knowing how much water is running in each household, at least a guesstimate is another measure that could help find leaks quicker. But a monitor can do more than help find leaks. He or she can gather the information on how much households are using in order to determine if there are other gallons being used by the town that might be leaks. They can assist residents. They make recommendations. They can assist seniors so that we're all comfortable with the amount of water that we're running. People are not running water because they want to. No, I agree. Council agrees. They are not. We recognize that. But some may be running it at levels that are unnecessary. Others may be running it without knowing that they are. Leaky valves, for example. In both cases, water may run excessively all year round. The significant point is that if we all work together, we can all run water when it is required without fear. Everyone can be taken care of. I want to make it very clear that this report is not a response to the delegation at our regular meeting on June 21st. Rather, it is a response to Mr. Reed's interview on the BBS. A response on the delegation will come once council meets for its discussions. Council recognizes people's fears of meters. And again, I reiterate, anyone who was at our discussions when the plan was put in and we had three or four, not all councilors were present. And I should indicate as well that when I say council provided this information, that again, may not be all councilor, but it certainly was the majority. The intent of our plan was not for meters. The intent of our plan was to try to figure out as cheaply as possible a way to get a handle on how to manage our system. And one of the key things we find is that we need to know at least a guesstimate of how much each household is running, whether that's by a phone call, whether it's by someone coming in because you don't mind them coming in, or whatever the case. So that if we know Barbara Browder, for example, is running a half gallon a minute and the people next door to that are running a third of a gallon a minute, we can estimate how much water is being used through the home and that what's left over has to be something else. And that would certainly help us keep more control of the leaks. Our main focus is to get a handle on how much water is being used and where it's being used so that we can adjust our usage either by managing our house flows or fixing leaks. We need to know which is which. There's a book by Doug Griffiths and Kelly Klimmer. I think it's a 2010 book called 13 Ways to Kill Your Community. And the first way to kill your community, the first way on the list, is don't have quality water. We do have quality water. We just need to manage it. Once we have a meeting, um, with councillors and advice from councillors, uh, I'll be back or someone will be back to do, um, another report and to talk to the public. But if you have some opinions or thoughts of resolutions, we would very much appreciate, uh, having them because knowing those things will help us to move forward. And before we know it, winter is going to be up on us again and we're going to be dealing with the same issues again. So help us help you. Thank you and good evening.